To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice.
Dear Lord, as we gather today to make decisions, let's enter into our brains and our hearts to make the best decisions that we can as we work for the county and the county good, we ask in your name, amen.
All we're gonna do is gymnastics here this morning, go ahead and exit this meeting.
We need a motion to exit the regular meeting.
Motion to exit the regular meeting and enter into the solid waste.
Solid waste budget, solid waste.
Solid waste budget meeting.
Fred and Bob.
Okay. Need a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all trying to hide in the back, Chris.
We usually don't even come up here, I didn't think last, this generally.
And we want you front and center.
Okay.
Just to see and say aye. Of course, your budget was looked at last month and everything, so really unless there are any questions, we really just need a motion to approve the solid waste 2025 budget. And salary ordinance. Or what? Oh, what is that number? Fourteen. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen. We got several of those today.
I'll make a motion except as presented.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're long enough to warm up the seat for you.
Hey, but we got to see you, and you're, that, see, that way you're on camera.
Okay, okay, I understand. We usually just sit in the back, so.
Thank you. Exit, that one, and then, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we need a motion to exit solid waste budget adoption.
So moved.
Second.
John?
Fred.
Oh, Kathy and Fred.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, you came from them.
We need a motion to enter the Adams County budget.
Make a motion to enter the Adams County budget.
Hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think, I think you all got the email that whatever decisions you make on any of the salaries, Ree has to put in, in real time, so that we can reprint what you will sign when it is approved, and then we will submit that into gateway, and that has to be done within, what, twenty-four hours of adoption? Something like that, so, so I guess the floor is open for discussion.
They want to do the budget first.
I don't, well, can we?
Budget first, and that's fifteen, and then you.
You can.
Do you have any changes to the budget?
We do have, just want to confirm, we do have all the spending moved from the QIM accounts, right?
So they can do that, and then discuss salary ordinance changes? Will that change the budget? So can we approve the budget before we do the other?
Yeah, I mean, do you have changes? Do you have changes for wages or salaries? Or, sorry, salaries or what budget?
The wage review met this morning, right?
We had a wager zoom that's morning. Corey, you want to present that?
I see how it is. Yeah, so, Stan and Bob, you guys can correct me if I get any of these wrong, but we were unanimous on all three of those. And I think the big impetus behind these is trying to keep the system intact the way that it should be. So for the buildings director, and I don't have any of this in front of me, so I'm, I'm going from my phone here, but I believe we said we went from an EX two right now, going to an EX three. I think that pretty fairly hits what we wanted and deals with keeping everything intact. For the HR coordinator, we're basically gonna leave that with the regular three percent that everyone else is getting. The commissioners are gonna go back and relook at the job description, there's a chance they may change her job description to more of a director. If they do change that, that is up to them to decide those, and if they do, then we'll reevaluate at that time. And then for the chief deputy auditor, leaving that one at the N E seven that it is with the regular three percent raise that it should be, we think those positions are all accurately the way they should be, and they, they don't, they shouldn't be changed, and I think we're all three were unanimous in that. Bob, Stan, I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that?
No, I, I, we just had, we had very lively discussion this morning, and it was good, good discussion on everybody's behalf, but that's, that's what the decisions were that we're, come up with.
Yeah, no, I tend to agree with both of you, we had a good discussion, I do appreciate Clayton sitting in with us this morning, since one of the positions was the HR position, and Shannon typically leads the wage review committee, so I asked Clayton to sit in in place of her, and so, I appreciated that. So, that, that's the recommendation coming out of our, our committee this morning.
I guess with that, I'll make a motion to adopt all three of those recommendations.
Well, I guess before we go any further, I'd, I'd still like to go on record that we need to do something with, you know, in the future, obviously it's not gonna happen this year, but we're lacking in the, the elected officials, the full-time elected official position, and the professional level county workers. I mean, we're getting, they haven't been changed in twenty years, you know, besides the three percent, but, in my opinion, they're not at a professional level standard as a full-time livable professional position, so then either you get the, the elected officials up first, and then follow that by the professional level, or, you know, vice versa, but, you know, we, next year we need to really focus on that, in my sole opinion.
And I, I hundred percent agree with that, John, I think, I think, especially given the way that the end of the budget council meeting went, where we had a whole bunch of these kind of rushed through at the last minute on accident, or however that happened, it, it sort of pushed the need to revisit the categorization system front and center, like now we almost have to deal with it. So for now, we want to keep things as intact as we can, but I do think that we're gonna have to do a little bit bigger of a reevaluation next year, and obviously we'll be leaning on, leaning on Shannon for a lot of the input, and, you know, what's the best way to maintain as much as we possibly can without completely starting over, but, but obviously we've got some things that are gonna need to get figured out.
I, I still don't think is the best idea to, to go forward just based on, because it's how that it fits in our system, obviously our system is failing, starting to crumble. I know there's a lot of work that goes into it, but it, you know, I think we're just passing the buck and kicking the can down the road. So with that, I mean, we can. I guess I don't, I don't have anything else.
Ree, do you need any clarification on anything while you're entering numbers? I mean, technically, I don't know that it's too late if you wanted to do an elected official increase, but if you want to wait till next year, you can, now's the time to discuss it if you want to entertain doing what John said, but that's totally up to council. Can you just leave it at the three percent? Look at it going in the next year, you can move it this year if you want, or wait. Until it's approved, you're still kind of in discussions on it. We're in discussion, you have a motion in a second, but as soon as they're done discussing, then they can move.
I'll just go on record by saying I agree with John, everything needs to be redone, looked at. Sorry about this year, but.
I agree too, we need to reevaluate it, hopefully soon and later.
Exactly.
And, and we talked about that in the wage committee, that yes, we do need to, that's got to be one of the priorities for next year, is relooking at and redoing those, the category systems, because we, yeah, obviously this one, you know, it's what, six, seven years old now, and the way things have changed and things going forward, we need to look at, at making changes to keep up with, basically keep up with private sector and, and what's going on.
Are you all in favor of delaying that discussion for a moment?
Yep.
You have a motion in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's approved. Now we're going to have ordinance at this fifteen.
Sixteen.
Ordinance sixteen will be the salary ordinance with wages and salaries, which, Ree, you have what, you have what you need for salary ordinance approval?
Do you adopt in twenty fourteen? Did fourteen or fifteen?
Yes.
Solid waste county?
Yes.
Budget ordinance out, I got three percent.
Now the salary ordinance will be sixteen, and the one you have later should be seventeen. Yes. Which the salary ordinance is basically what you guys just did for salaries and wages, but they're adopted separately as separate ordinances.
Need a motion for the salary ordinance?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the salary ordinance.
Sixteen, yeah.
Moved and seconded to approve the salary ordinance.
Who seconded it, Bob?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Now we're gonna need a motion to exit the budget and enter the regular council meeting.
Motion to exit the budget hearing and enter the regular council meeting.
Move in second to, to exit the budget hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
First. Getting to this point is like trying to get here this morning through all the detours and traffic.
Better than what it was a week or so ago.
Okay. Are we in here?
No. Wage recommendation for prosecuting attorney. Do we have to do that separately, the wage review recommendation for prosecuting attorney?
That's for this year.
Oh, that's an amended salary ordinance? Okay. Okay. So we need to discuss the amended salary ordinance for prosecuting attorney, which is undermined, if they have it on there to discuss, we can go ahead and do that. Shannon, do you want to discuss the wage rerecommendation for the amended salary ordinance on the agenda?
We had that one last month, and again, it was wage review, or Bob and Stan, so we agreed, they agreed that the recommendation to you guys would be to move the victim advocate position to a full-time position, and change the hourly wage to twenty-four dollars and fifty cents an hour, which is more in line with what other counties are paying for that type of position. Jerry has the need for it, and then there's also a grant attached to it, which, there's a grant, victim advocate, as well, that I believe pays for eighty percent of the salary, but you'd only be on the hook for the twenty in the benefits.
Shannon, do you need grant?
No.
Discussion. I think what you're approving is the actual amended salary.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Make a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nate? Front and center, please.
You're the only one that was assigned these.
I'm just looking at, hoping for some credit for your room closures here.
Um, oh.
Don't look that closer up. Yeah. Um, it's a couple different items, um, obviously we've just gone through some of the safety grant, that application has been turned in and accepted by the state, just presenting today for the regular federally call, that is coming out in November, ending like the first week of December, and I've got two projects for consideration, one would be my priority project, would be Bridge ninety-three, that's the one on Van Furin, triple zero chisps, north of one twenty-four, north of Monroe there, next to Ripley Trunks, that's a bridge project that's been under designed currently by Aegis B L N, with an after review of both the budget, their cost estimates and the like, I don't feel like it's suitable CCMG project or community crossings matching grant, I would like to seek federal funds, and I can't make the numbers pencil out appropriately without essentially starting over with the project. And we could still use the survey and some of the design work and estimates, but I want to seek federal funds for both the final preliminary engineering work that's been done, some utility relocation, construction, and construction inspection, it makes the project look more expensive, but in the end, the dollar amount obligation from the county would be reduced down to five hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred dollars, that's the cap that I'm looking at as far as the local match. The total estimated cost, and this was provided by Aegis B L N who's been working on the project, is for a total project cost including all of those elements of two million six hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. I'm not exactly satisfied with those estimates, I'd like to say it's less, but until I get to the elements where I can actually make some contract negotiations, I can't, I don't feel like I'd be trying to do that.
This is just for Bridge ninety-three?
This is just for Bridge ninety-three.
So you said you want to seek federal funds, is this basically a formality, and you know we'll get them, or?
I can't guarantee it, if, if we don't get them, then we're not, obviously we won't, we won't proceed with any of this, none of this money gets spent.
Okay, so we only do it if we get the funds?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm just asking for your permission to seek the funds so that I can program that project in for that schedule, if we don't get the federal funds, none of that money's getting spent because there's nobody that that's sustainable.
And if this, if we got them, this would be executed in twenty-five?
This would actually, we'd really start spending the money in twenty-six, because we'd have to select another consultants and then start that process, and so it'd be a reimbursable program for that, so it'd be twenty-six through possibly as late as fiscal year twenty thirty, I don't know the actual year of the federal funds, so we're programming it out as far as six years of inflation from today to then, but depending on where they decide which funds we were, would be awarded, it may flex inside that. So until we're awarded, until they give us, here's how much money, and here's the schedule that we're willing to work with you, we can't expect much more than that. So right now I'm giving you kind of the whole buffet of options of fully kitted out project, and then I'm gonna have to work on trying to reduce that there, so.
So I mean, we want, just want to hear about both of them, and I mean, if we're seeking grants for it, I would just approve both of them personally.
Yeah. Just going through them in order then.
Okay.
And then the second project that I'm looking at is for Bridge one oh five, this is for a thin deck overlay, Bridge one oh five is on triple zero just north of three hundred south, there's heavy deck erosion on that, actually starting to pop out, I chained the deck, sounding it, looking for the lamination, there's quite a bit on that bridge, and because of the ruts caused by, and, and it is from buggies and horse hooves that are causing the damage to that deck, but it's got a lot of traffic for it, that's what I'm trying to pursue. It's been on my bridge asset management plan, rehabs are typically eligible for federal funds, but because our asset management plan has been approved for federal projects, I'm looking to pursue the funding for this one as well. This project is much less expensive, but I'm fairly confident with where the numbers are on here, we've got five years of inflation included in this project as well, the total project cost between preliminary engineering, there's no right-of-way utilities, we need to be relocated with this one because we're not expanding the bridge, moving the bridge as we are with ninety-three, so the total project cost is at eight hundred and seventy thousand five hundred dollars. So the grant would be six hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred that I'm pursuing, our total obligation is estimated at one hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred. So it's a twenty percent match as we are with this one, I am looking for this one, and when you submit, you submit priorities, you say priority one, priority two, and they will work their way down, if they can't fund the one, they may jump down to two depending on how they allocate money across the table, so.
Same thing with this one, for twenty twenty-six, we'll do it unless.
This one, yep, same schedule, because this one's a smaller project, I, during the interview process, I may entertain with NDOT that we could do this faster because there's no additional right-of-way acquisition of utilities, so we could compress the schedule.
We're not actually redoing the bridge, it's redecking it.
It's redecking it, design's a little simpler, there's no geotech work that's done, so there's elements that are reduced, hence why we're a third of the cost.
Is that bridge worth exploring? Expanding it, widening it, I mean, that's a very heavily traveled road in any, you know, future development, south of Monroe.
How old is the bridge, do we have?
I, I do, it's in that binder behind me, but off the top of my head, I do not, so I don't have that one on the top of my, it's a good candidate for rehab at this point, if we did a larger project, I believe that bridge. Brad, what, what's the width on that, is that twenty-eight feet wide inside to inside?
That's what I'm looking at right now, it's a wide.
One oh five.
Yeah, you don't funnel down for that bridge.
No, I don't think that.
Wide bridge plus, plus the aprons and everything, so that, that bridge is good wide.
Could it be a candidate for widening, John, sure, I don't think it would be necessarily a choke point if there, at some point triple zero would be to, to be improved, if you were to take triple zero to, say, eleven-foot lanes for eight foot shoulders, or even twenty lanes, there might be, there could be some design implications that we have to deal with at that, that point, since we don't have a plan for triple zero that includes any of those, I didn't use that in consideration as far as looking at options for rehab, this is certainly gonna be a need, I could, we could delay that one as an option further out, if we did improvements as far as widening and replacement, the elements are there, don't justify replacement right now, so that's why we're looking at.
You don't have justification, they're not gonna give you the money for it either?
Yeah, so it's gonna be very difficult to justify the replacement, even if we were to widen triple zero, let's say, south or north for it, a larger project, but, it's a fair question, and, sorry, I didn't have it ready.
Roadway width is twenty-eight.
So, it would be able to handle really a federal project as far as the roadway, as long as you're not doing something very.
I'd make a motion then to approve seeking the grants for both those projects, understanding they don't get down unless we get the grant money.
I'll second. Aye.
Aye.
We'll leave those here since you got your next meeting.
Yep, exactly, thank you, thank you very much, good question, John. Thanks.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Mine is a little more informational, as some of you know, one of the road projects we've had, we've been giving you updates every now and then on County Road seven hundred south, from twenty-seven to one fifty west, is a project that was, started working on, getting it around before I was even there, good news is, we now have plans, we are going to proceed to bid it out, we'll accept bids the end of November, so what that means is the project should go next year, so it's one of them where it all came together here at the end, we now have plans for it, you know, we're meeting with the school and talking to them, we're meeting with the city of Burn, talking to them, so the project should go next year, so this is a heads up, the next year it's, it's a big chunk of money that we're gonna spend on that project, so this is informational, you know, you've, of course, prices went up, but we try to keep you updated what we can.
Awesome.
Just letting you know, next year it goes and.
Good, and so I'm, this is just curiosity, has nothing to do with that, what's going on with the dirt road from Pickway to, what, I guess eight hundred?
Yep, so that project has been in the works also for a long time, and now that this project here, seven hundred south, is getting done, that's gonna be our next, next big focus is eight hundred north.
That's it, okay.
Um, yep, so we've been working with Mark and Clayton and getting some things around, trying to work things out so all the property owners are agreeable to what we're gonna do.
Are you gonna be paved or stone?
It'll be chipping sealed, but yeah. Yep. So that's our next big one after this one gets done.
That's been an eyesore, since I was little.
Excited about this, finally got a big project that's gonna get done, I'm excited, I'm excited to get this one done. I know, that's gonna be an amazing improvement down there, so.
I think I just name it Mud Road, that's what it's, I've known it as.
Eight north?
Yeah.
I don't know, unless somebody can come up with a, one of those catchy names.
As everybody took their monster trucks and tried going through after the rain.
Yep. Anyhow, there you go, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Brad. Brad, just to add to that, we are presenting this both to South Adams and to the city of Burn.
Burn, city capital.
Yeah, so this week and next week, we're gonna be presenting that to both of them, at least as far as traffic control and plan as well, so there at least will be updated what we're proposing to do, so.
Yep, no, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney, attorney, tell them that.
Yep, so, just do the first one. The first presentation would be resolution twenty twenty-four nine, short title is a resolution by the county council of Adams County, State of Indiana adopting subsequent and additional uses for the use of ARPA, excuse me, local recovery funds within the Adams County Fiscal Recovery Plan to pay the costs assessed by the Indiana State Board of Accounts to conduct the federally mandated audit of the Adams County records concerns concerning the management and use of ARPA funds. The long, short of this resolution is simply that, that the county is allowed, and Julian Murray put through this resolution, the county's allowed to pay for the price of the audit with ARPA funds, so this resolution, by passing it, would allow for that.
And we, I think we intentionally left some money there for that.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to.
Check that number.
Accept the resolution.
Second.
Is it nine?
Nine, yeah, because I just printed off the new one and I looked at yours.
Okay.
Moved and seconded to approve.
All these numbers.
Resolution twenty twenty-four nine?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ree, sorry to put you on the spot, do you know roughly, you were keeping a running tally of money that was not spent for projects?
I think that was last updated, late last month sometime, and I do know that we had some claims in there this time for Park and Rec, we still had some left. So I'm guessing after this claim cycle, we should have more of an idea, Mike Brown is getting ready to submit another one for Geneva as well.
So, the money that was left to allocate that wasn't attached to any project as of nine four was twenty-nine thousand five thirty-five, which that was how much you just did.
That was, that was strictly unallocated, not counting what was unspent or underspent from other projects?
That is, what hasn't been, has not been allocated, and in any project that is done that had money left over, it's happened.
That's everything? That's everything?
Whenever they just. I can update it, I can try to get updated.
Well, it's going to be pretty close.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, around.
Tony, do you know what Mike's planning? You're talking about unallocated, right?
I like sending one in for Geneva.
I mean, you know roughly how much.
That's, but that's already allocated, right?
Yes, yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
I think, I think, John, you asked.
There's about twenty thousand that is not allocated.
John was actually talking about unspent, of the allocated.
And that's what I'm saying, we still, we still have claims coming in that are in this claim cycle.
Right.
So it's hard to, it's hard to estimate.
Remind me, is it, it's all got to be allocated this year?
It's going to be obligated by the end of the year.
And then we have to, and then we have till twenty-six to spend it.
Yep.
Under contract of some sort.
I mean, if everybody spends what they asked for, there should be about twenty thousand left. Then we'll have to look and see how much is in there for the attorneys and administrative stuff, uh, because that is allowed under what the federal government did. Because you might still have attorney things come up even after this year.
So really in December, we need to, we need to know what we don't have allocated, right?
Yeah, we have to have it obligated by then, which I've, I've sent out emails, I've announced it in meetings, so everybody should know. But at the start of December, we will try to look and see exactly what we have in each one, and I will get with those people and say, hey, got to have it obligated, if you don't, if you aren't spending anymore, let us know, we'll put it in the unallocated and, and we should be okay.
Well, but we need to, we need to allocate it in December, don't we?
Yes. Well, yes.
I mean, it's only going to be twenty, twenty-five thousand, but it's.
Well, I, I, in November, I'll get with them and see how, how much more they might have.
Is there, you know, off the top of your head, is there any large chunk out there from one of the projects that are not under contract?
There are no huge chunks.
I just don't want to get bit, you know, we're halfway through a project and then.
Yeah, I mean, and I told Jeremy and some of the others, uh, the commissioners know on consulting thing that they requested, they're going to have a contract in place with the consulting firm. Uh, that was two hundred thousand, but it'll be a little under that. Uh, Tom's was a big one, that was three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, but I've already got a contract in for that. I can't think of any major ones still out there. Web X should be done, generator should be done. Although, I don't know if he's paid for the generator itself yet.
So as of September fourth, the generator had a hundred and five left, or five thousand. Legal fees are seventeen thousand left. Web X, they're a little bit over ten thousand. Geneva IT is, they have not spent a penny, so there's a hundred and thirty-two thousand A O six. The reporter that we spent, uh, Park and Rec had eighty-eight thousand.
And we, we have claims in for them this time, as I remember signing them.
Surveyor has a hundred and thirteen thou, over a hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh, Monroe Police Department, they haven't spent a penny, so they have eight thousand.
Geneva and Monroe, that'd be through Mike though, right?
Yeah, Mike is the one that's going to have to submit them.
So, well, it's got to be allocated or we have to have contracts for it?
Have to have contracts, because that's what the government means by obligated.
So, um, I mean, can you, like, send an email to all the people who have unspent allocated money and tell, just as a reminder, I mean, we don't want to remind them in December.
I actually have twice, but I will again.
Okay, I mean, otherwise they might lose it.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be their own fault, not ours.
By the time December rolls around and we, we might have to make decisions on something, then I've, I've told them, and I know Mike has gotten some in, I think, on Geneva, but it's in for this cycle, I think, and he's got another one he's getting ready to do because he asks for the number that I sent to him.
And Monroe one, I don't know if that's going to come from Mike or if that's coming from.
I think that, I think Mike said that would come from him, but he also told me that eight thousand is not going to be near enough, they're going to have to come up with some of the costs to do it themselves. So.
The eight ground probably come back to us.
Unless Mike finds a way to help him out with eight ground to get started, eight grand. But in answer to Fred's question, yeah, I've emailed him a couple times and I will again. Once I find out the claims that we have in now and those, then we'll know what totals we're at now. So, and I've warned them to keep track of what they're spending because they can't go over. It was not our job to keep track of what they're spending, that's their job. So.
That's a big deal. We could be, like I said, I don't want to get halfway through something they're in the middle of and not have signed for the, the rest of the work or material or whatever.
I think they're all aware and I think they're working on it. I know, uh, Steve Bailey, they already have the consulting company, all they got to do is get the contract signed, it's going to be under what was allotted, so I think things are working in the pipeline, we just have to wait until they go through the two-week claim cycle.
Then if there's anything left, do we want to in December be ready to pick something in county general that we can allocate it to?
I would think we have to obligate it somehow. The, the, we, I know the one thing that they allow is leaving some for attorneys, if you have questions on anything. Uh, that's one thing, and they made, I mean, if Julie Marie were here, she would tell you, they are sending us final interim rules every other week almost with changes to get this stuff done. As of right now, it would have to be obligated by having some sort of contract. So yes, we can be looking, council will be looking at something that maybe we could have to do that.
We're, we're going to have, right now, we know we're at least at twenty thousand, right? So Stan, is there a way you could check with, uh, Rick to see if there's anything for the building?
Uh, yeah, I sure can, see what.
I mean, give him a couple, that way he's got a couple of months to determine something.
Yeah, because I know he's doing some work at the courthouse, right? What else he's got?
I think it'd be a good idea to, to him up, I'd probably be able to find something, I would think.
I would think by the end of November, we definitely need to have what's left in each one. And if they have some left, personally, I'm going to contact them and say, hey, we've got to know now, because if you aren't, if you don't have any more out of that, we're going to move it over here so we can get it allocated.
I don't know what, you guys think it's a good idea to tell them, they need to have a contract by the December meeting?
I think we should give them some type of deadline.
Yeah, because otherwise, by the December meeting, then we know what they don't, and so.
When I send the email out, I'll, I'll mention to them, you got to have it by the end of November so that it can be discussed in December when you guys need.
Or it's going.
Or you're losing it and it's coming back.
So, and, yeah.
Then Stan, Stan, you'll probably need to have something from buildings by then too. That way we have a con, you know, a proposal in place that we could approve in December for whatever we need.
Yeah.
Well, the whole, the whole trick is going to be getting the contract.
Yeah, that, that, so if we talk to them now though, hopefully we can have something.
Have a proposal by then that if we, whatever extra money we have in December, we can approve, and then you guys can just get it signed in the next, you know, two, three weeks.
No. We do need to talk to Mike in the surveyor's office with that money that he's got. What did he get? Did he get the truck or the trailer already?
I think, oh, God, I was saying he's got both, but I don't know which.
Because I think he I'm pretty sure that money that was set aside, that was actually when Paul was here, but the shipping problems came and it kept going to the next year and.
But that should be under some type of contract or order or something, right?
I'll have to talk to Mike and see where he's at with that. I know I've told him, but I'll remind him again, so.
I wouldn't assume anything, I would verify it.
Yeah. I didn't have more eyesight.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll stick with somebody.
So the second one would be ordinance number twenty twenty-four seventeen, which short title is an ordinance by the county council of Adams County, state of Indiana, allocating a portion of the Adams County Recorder's perpetuation fund for training, office supplies, and supplemental expenses incurred by said department. Again, rather than reading through this verbatim, um, the perpetuation fund was set up by the recorder's office pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six-two, seven, ten D. There is an affidavit of the, the county recorder attached. That affidavit, um, states that the current revenue of the fund is sufficient to fulfill the statutory purposes of the fund. The technology of the Adams County Recorder's Office is presently updated and at a level to sufficiently meet the statutory purposes of the fund in the recorder's office. The fund has a sufficient reserve consistent with the recorder's plan to capitalize the next technology or other records management upgrade necessary to fulfill the statutory purpose of the fund in the recorder's office, and the recorder specifically requests the sum of six thousand dollars to be used from the fund to supplement the recorder's budget to pay for office supplies, training, and other reasonable department expenses in twenty twenty-five. This is a similar ordinance, I believe this has been passed the last two years. It's a pretty regular request.
They're kind of in charge of their per fund and.
Yeah.
Just wants to see them for training.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Just twenty twenty-four dash seventeen.
Motion to second to approve, Brad. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four seventeen, all those in favor?
Let me ask, did we actually get the motion second on the federal audit?
We had the, we didn't have the vote.
Did we get a motion second and a vote on that one?
On the first, on the resolution?
On resolution twenty twenty-four dash nine?
Yes.
We did, because you guys had discussions after the.
I don't think we voted on it.
I didn't remember, but I don't remember, I mean, you can vote again. Who, who was the, who made the motion second on it, Fred and John?
I've heard, so.
Yeah.
You might have, but just in case, go ahead and do it again. Vote again. All in favor? All right, there you go, okay. I just want to be safe, because I don't want to call you all back to make one vote.
There's the affidavit from, uh, the affidavit to attach Fred ordinance.
Okay, that's all I have then. Thank you.
Sandy is here now.
He's not even in town.
Sandy?
This affidavit that stays with this is why.
I was just about to come here today, I had gone for the commissioners last week to ask for permission to file for a court security application, green application through the state supreme court. Go toward, um, a new panic alarm system. We all have, I don't know if you have a mind here with the buttons that are, have been around for a pretty long time. So we wanted to apply for that, and then also for video equipment, um, the monitor was to go into IT, excuse me, go into the clerk's office, forty and in the circuit court so that we can actually monitor the cameras, court security cameras that we have. Think that would be very helpful so that we would know ahead in time if there was some type of an altercation or anything or not. Um, the third thing is, uh, for forty to create some kind of a emergency exit for them, because they do not have any kind of exit right now.
I'm sorry, for four D?
Um, our child support office, it's actually right inside the circuit court door. So that would help create a fire exit for them, so.
Do we know what, what, what elements were involved? Do we know what that would involve?
Uh, yes, I do, but, um.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. And so I can explain that to you further. But anyways, that's what we're asking for, um, is just permission to do the grant application to the state. Um, we don't know what get it, would like to apply for it. They are actually the ones that gave us, I believe, thirty-seven thousand dollars the last time so that we could do all the security work in the courtroom. It's a really nice grant, easy to do and easy to do the term.
So doing a, a, uh, emergency escape as well, with, uh, fire exit? I mean, is there large modifications to the building we're talking about, or what do we?
I guess.
Okay. And so do we have costs on all this to know?
Yes, that's a separate cost. I'm not sure if you have that in the application.
You give the total amount, the total amount that they're requesting to apply for, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars and one penny. Uh, the commissioners had approved this last week, so it is now coming for council, for them to get approval to seek this grant as a court reform grant.
And so it's my, this total that you, the seventy-eight thousand is something you've already got contractors in and.
We've got estimates.
Estimates, okay.
And I can provide those to you.
No, that's okay, I just, yeah, just wanted to know.
Kind of what we had talked about at the change committee, I think.
Okay, yeah. I'll make a motion to proceed. Second.
Comments? Sandy, I have a question relating to that, um, what, what kind of additional security are you adding? Are you just replacing what we have or?
Like in respect to the panic buttons or? Yes, it's, we have like panic buttons that we have now. Some don't necessarily work when they go into the sheriff's department, as to the location, that's a pretty old system. So we've kind of been hashing around at different meetings, um, in order to get something that's more updated, that would come right into our computers. And just, I don't know, we've been hashing around in this application or this grant that we can get through the state for court security, which is, help us start to accomplish that. It would only cover the courthouse and like superior court, but it would not cover the annex. And when I talked to Lakeland Electronics, this is where I got the estimate from, they said probably to do it at the annex would be an additional thirty-three thousand dollars. So that's something that we can start down there, kind of put the main equipment in down there, and then proceed if, you know, when you guys want to do the annex too, but that panic system really needs updating. It's pretty old. It's a start.
Need a vote?
Me, uh, motion to.
We have a motion in a second. To say all those in favor of approving the, or to seek that grant, court reform grant. Fred and John and Red.
Okay, all those, they're the person?
I'll scan a copy and send to you.
That sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cover additions in the.
Yeah, I'll put it all right in the auditorium for it, because that's all I have. You already did one of the amended salary ordinances for victim advocate. The other one is for a deputy of lit public safety, uh, twenty-eight seventy-two an hour. Do you want to do, let's just do them several, let's do the salary ordinance, then we'll do the transfers, then we'll do the additions. I think, I think you all got the email with all this on it, so you have any questions on the amended salary ordinance?
I'm making a motion to approve the salary ordinance and the transfers, just knock those out, if that's all right.
Okay, second. Brad on both of those, right? Okay.
Have a motion to approve, all those in favor? Aye. Stars?
You want to sign those first and then I'll send it. Well, you're down. And then I'll send it around. Don't leave afterward until I get a chance to double check that we got everything. Just leave it there. That's fine. I just want to make sure everything is signed so I don't have to hunt anybody down or. Or something. Okay, the additional appropriations. Going is for that victim, victim advocate that we just discussed. It means to have an additional to, to pay that the rest of the year. The county drug free Adams, those additionals are basically the approval of their submission into the state came a little bit later than normal. So this isn't extra additional money. It's just.
This is appropriating grant.
Appropriating grant money is what this is.
That's it for the additionals?
That's it for the additionals.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Brad and Kathy. Got it.
Have a motion to approve the additionals. All those in favor?
So as you sign that, I'll send these around to this. He's in Texas. I don't think he's going to be signing it. Corey, I, I don't, maybe Clayton would know, since he is on remotely as far as signing these, I know when a Commissioner's been gone, I'm allowed to sign it and put remote next to it. Is that okay in this instance as well?
Yeah, and then just put your initials beside it.
And Corey, I don't think you had any nay votes on the grants or any of the stuff that we just did, did you? Was it all ayes?
Correct. All have been, all have been yeses all day.
Okay, then I will sign your name and put remote next to it, just so you know.
Thank you.
There are three, three things here. I think they voted on me too. I don't have any.
Any other matters to be brought to the course? Sam?
The only thing, as you know, we had the judicial facilities review, meditative presentation, they just dialing also permissions. And so I think the recommendation was to pursue the, the project as presented. And so I guess part of the ongoing work would be to explore the, the finance consideration for this project. And I guess I would ask that for the month of November, if you would add it.
And I've already told Bree to add that. She's already added it.
But I just wanted to bring it before the bodies asked.
In some months, there may not be anything and you just move on. It's the same thing we did with the jail and all that back then. It was the same thing. It was on there every week.
Hopefully we'll have a little bit of a statement and I think that's the next step is to see how, how that would.
And just for a refresher, I believe we set aside, I don't know what fund we put in, but the sale of Golden Meadows land.
That, that money's, the sale was almost 1.89 and so since then. And I think he's been going to the casinos again over the years.
If you remember, that particular fund takes both bodies to agree on spending out of that fund.
But yeah, that, that was it. Have we titled that the Capital Improvement Fund?
I think it's just Golden Meadows. But that fund is not earning interest. The interest is all going into that.
I thought, Ed, you were giving updates about the interest earned on that money. You had them in CDs?
Uh, no, I have it in trust Indiana.
Don't we want the interest to go into that fund? Yeah.
I thought too we were putting the interest into that.
Yeah, I get you.
I need track of the interest along with it, but it's just separated in two different pots.
Interest, the interest only goes into like County General, Highway, your drain funds, your 4D fund. There's only like eight or nine.
I thought they were in a CD at 5%.
No, you, you can't just take individual things you want to get interest on and just say you're getting interest on it.
But we always know how much interest that money is earning.
Yes.
So just, do you have to know off the top of your head?
Yes.
Who cares? I mean, I think we want to use the interest, unless for some reason something comes up, of course, but I would say we want to use that interest for that project. I remember you saying that was in a, a New York bank.
As you move ahead with financials, I, I think you'll probably, and that, that's going to be up to you, but probably bring in somebody like Baker Telly or a financial consultant to kind of help through it. And this is going to be one piece to that. Financials for this, this project.
It made approximately.
I'm just curious ballpark. It doesn't have to be.
$376,000 in interest.
So right now all told were over to, was 2.1 at least, right?
So we are at one, 1,940,298.45. That's, that's total. That would be the original farm land sale and then the proceeds that we got from the auction. There's still the land that surrounds the building and whatever happens with that down the road, that will, that will also be added.
Should we be doing a, Bree or Tony, a, a transfer to put that, those proceeds back into that fund? Or is that possible?
I don't have the money in a fund. I have those are in an account.
Earn the account, I guess.
You pay the interest into the fund. So, but, so by the resolution, it's saying that the interest goes then to, if there's not a specific fund, that the money goes back to County General. So the money is going to County General. And that's where the money will sit. Unless you guys would have to do.
That's what I'm asking.
Something to move the money. Once you move the money out. Kind of like with public insurance money. Once you move public insurance money into public insurance, you can't move it back out. So I, I remember you guys talking about the interest, but I almost want to say like everybody decided not because one of the money is in there.
Well, what money was going into a CD and there is advantage? The advantage was putting it in a shorter term, like a, a one month CD versus a year because it was more fluid?
I'd make you more money in this account than I could with the CD right now. About a half a percent more.
Oh, so it was in a CD?
No, never had it in a CD. I investigated those and I reported on all those to you. But this account is a higher earning interest rate than the CDs were. Plus it's completely fluid. You know, if you want to spend it, we can get it this afternoon. It's a better deal right now. CDs are, are not where to be.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering if we could recruit this money to, they'll leave it at the Judicial Center, set that money aside and that line item if we can. I don't know if that's.
It already is set aside and it takes both bodies to vote on it.
Well.
It's set aside for whatever use you all do right now.
You have the money that you got from selling. But the interest is not going into like for the month of September, we brought in 173,000, somewhere at $91 in interest. Of that 173,000, 101,452 went to County General. So some of that 101 is that.
Is that interest? We just want to keep track of it. I think we'd all like to use it for that, right? Yeah, those are ten.
Right now, it's County General unappropriated for anything.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
I thought, I mean, I thought we'd put it in there too, but maybe we didn't.
Just sitting there. If we keep track of it, then if, and when start.
I, I still don't like that method because.
The treasure just takes their, you guys, the treasure takes all the interest that we earn on all our accounts.
You know, we have to do a transfer. I think, I, I think the interest, even if we have to transfer it monthly to put it in, I know it's kind of dangerous to put it. Dedicated strictly back to that fund and regulate it for spending, but I'm, that's what it was.
Let's say you guys can, and Clayton, we're really great there, we just have to fix the resolution to add that fund.
I think that's the intent of the design of our decision.
But right now there's even.
I think that's the way it should be done.
That's just not what the resolution said. Like Bob said, it's still sitting there. It's not being used. It's still gaining interest. And you all are the ones that determine how that's going to be used. Now, what I don't know is if the overall pot that Ed has grows interest at the whole amount, if you separate one fund out, it may not get as much interest for that certain fund. I don't know how that works.
No, that would be, they're in the same interest.
I'd give most interesting in for it out of all my different accounts. That's, that's the best place for it right now.
Okay, I'd assume the interest in that account is better than the interest we're getting in the, the County General account.
So, so it's all of your, they take all of our interest that we're earning on all of the funds, all of the funds that we have in the bank. They take all of our interest that we earn for that.
It's all in, I guess I'm getting confused now.
All of the interest that we earn and then there's a percentage. So like example on this, County, County General is getting 15.87%. So then they put in like, say you get $2 million of interest, that 2 million that gets divided out.
Into accounts.
Uh, gotcha. All right.
I got 11, 12 right now that's getting earned. And that's all by the revolution. If you guys want us to start going to that fund, we have the attorneys right up at the.
I definitely want that interest applied to the same purpose. Yeah, that was, like I said, that was our original intent. I think that was my assumption.
I think everyone's saying, let's do that. So I don't know Clayton or Bree or Tony, whoever needs to get whatever to do that. I think everyone's saying that. So let's just do that.
It would be Clayton and Julie Marie or somebody over there.
I think we would do a, a transfer next month to clean up the months past.
Unless you're going to retroactive it.
Yeah, let's make a retroactive. That way it's all, that way it's all.
I think you gotta think about, so then you're gonna, so, fine, you can do that because you're taking money away. So it gets paid in. So like the beginning of the, usually the first, I don't know, five days, four days of the month, Kathy brings over the interest report. She does all the work and all everything to tell me where it needs to go and I paid it. So all the interests that paid in through. What I'm saying, so you would, she would have to go back and redo however many months.
No, I think he's saying just transfer it. Can we just say if it's 300,000 or whatever you said it was, it's been earned, we'll just transfer that over to the other one so it doesn't get lost and then going forward, keep track of it.
One lump pass, whatever it is, put it in there, then the new ordinance would. Are you saying we can't transfer it into the fund though? Because of the different rules or?
Oh, I don't, I truly don't know. I would want to be retroactive of that because I mean, the interest is done paid in and there is. So to me, Kathy would have to then go back each month and totally redo all the numbers because you got to think.
No, just take a calculation of whatever it was.
That she has to go through every month to get that.
And it's not just a calculation. It's a percentage of how much is there. It's what I'm saying. So you guys are going to have to give it a percent. Like I said, County General's 16%.
Yeah, even if it's rounded, I mean, I don't think anybody's.
Who cares? Yeah, just get a job. We want to take as little of a bond as we can. So we want to get that interest over there.
But I would say you could either do it somehow, retroactive it, or you could make it effective next month. And then you could do a separate thing where you go to transfer however much you guys want to transfer out of County General over. Would almost be probably a little bit, maybe a one-time transfer.
Yeah, that's, that's the simplest answer. Yeah. Yeah. If it was 100,000 a month or. We're not, we're not twelve months, then. Down to the penny. Just I mean, if it's. Then transfer that money out and, and start.
Then I get, then tell like Clayton, know how much you guys want to transfer out and then they can type something up.
What's the ballpark? That, that's, oh, I was.
About 390.
So 400,000?
Let me, let me run those numbers again, not just in my head here, but to get a better number. I'll get that all to Bree and then.
Let's get it. So for next month, let's get a number that we need to transfer over that's been the interest to this point and then a new resolution that rolls the interest directly into it.
And ballpark. Would that be an amended resolution on the same one or just a totally new resolution?
I, I don't.
You and Julie.
I didn't see the original, whatever it is. So I'll, it's one or the other. I'll, I'll figure it out. We need, so we need a resolution to transfer.
Because you're, you're transferring money out, so you have to, you have to have a trail of you guys offering money.
That's what Steve wants to look for, the.
Oh, because we're not transferring within the same department or anything like the regular transfers come. Yep. Okay, gotcha. Okay, my fault.
And I'll have to look back and spend years of future.
We just want those funds to follow that with us. Be together.
Okay. So the point is, are there any additional comments?
Carl, the only last thing I would say is you all should be getting an email in the near future inviting you to the exit conference. They are basically done. They've set the exit conference for Monday, the 21st at 8:30. However, as always, they only require one member from each body to be there. Takes about a half an hour or so. But anyone is invited to attend it if they'd like. But right now, Stan, if I'm remembering correctly, Steve had said if it's Thursday, you do it. If it's Monday, he'll do it. He has agreed to do it as long as he gets out of Orlando. And Lenny has agreed, since he can be kind of flexible and lives in Decatur, he's agreed to be the council representative. So we have the two that we need. But you all will also receive an invite, but you're not obligated to do it. That's all I have.
No further business before us. Ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's not forget to vote.